Is anybody see Linda on here? Maybe Lila, why don't you drop her a text? Yeah, she usually comes in right on, there she is. Should have known. Right on the button. So I think everybody's here. I hope you can hear us, Linda. We were getting worried about you, but I knew you always come in right on the button. So it's actually one minute after six and I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. And tonight, before we get started, I just, I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I want to congratulate Deb Simmons on our election to mayor. And also to Brad Mayrley for his election to the city council. And they will be in January, they will be joining Councilman Jenna Eddington and Councilman Jerry Spiegman and Councilwoman Linda Kloski, who, and congratulations Linda on your reelection to the council.
Thank you, thank you.
So, and I'd also like to thank a few folks that have served the city for a long time that are stepping down. And one of them is Bert Went. Back when I used to sit on the planning commission, I sat next to Bert Went and Bert is leaving the planning commission after 20 years. Pretty hard to believe, but they've served that long. And Steve Bloom is also leading the planning commission after eight years. And Jim Hickey is going to be leaving the budget committee after nine years. And I also, Jim was also on the planning commission years ago when I was on the planning commission. And, and last but not least, I want to thank Steve Nudle for his service on the council. You know, this community would not have a viable golf course with a conservation easement attached to it if it wasn't for the work of Steve. And his leadership of the short-term rail work group, particularly during our lockdown and the pandemic, he was invaluable in helping me. So Steve and I are going to be disappearing together from the council. I got one other piece of news to give out. I know a lot of people have heard about this. It's kind of some sad news, but our former city manager Cynthia Alamea has been diagnosed with leukemia and is in a hospital in San Antonio, Texas. She's got a real fight ahead of her. She has a GoFundMe page which I would encourage you to take a look at. It'll tell you her condition, what's going on. And maybe some ways you can help if you want to. We need to keep her in our thoughts and prayer. She's got a real tough road ahead of her. So with that, let's see if I forgot anybody here. I don't think I did. So tonight marks my 72nd and last city council meeting as mayor. It also marks the end of my 17 years of public service for the city of Manzanita. I don't know where all that time went. But I know that the new councils, when they take over at the beginning of the year, you guys are going to all work in the best interests of the city. It's all going to work out great. So, and I, I tell you what, I also get some comfort in in knowing that the day-to-day operations of the city are being run by an experienced professional and Lila Amon. She's doing an excellent job. So I think everything's going to be great. So let's get started with the agenda. We've got a short agenda tonight with a few administrative items. I think we want to wrap up by year end. So let's get started. We'll start with honest, excuse me, audience participation. Anyone who would like to address the council, remember to keep your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself and where you're from. And this is not a time to ask questions or engage in a debate, and it doesn't necessarily, your comments don't necessarily require a response from the council. So does anybody have their hammer raised tonight that wants to address us tonight, Nancy?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have two hands as of right now. Lila Salmon will go first. Go ahead, Lila.
Lila.
Lila, Lila.
It's taken me a year and a half to learn how to pronounce my name differently, so.
But before I say what I was prepared to say, I building on what you said, Mayor Scott, about Cynthia, I received a text and a picture from her today. She entered the hospital today for her second round of chemo, which means that she stays there for a whole week with daily. And she is feeling very positive. And I'm trying to get an address where we can send notes or greeting cards. And if I do, I will let people know.
That'd be great.
My, my reason for asking to speak today is really a thank, it's a personal thank you. Because when I realized that this council meeting marks the end of an era for me, for our city government and the beginning of a new one, it led me to reflect on some of the joys of the past through decades. I owe a thanks to so many of you. When Linda Kozlowski and I decided to run for the, two of the open council seats, after serving on Mayor Hugh McIsaac's Citizens Advisory Committee, remember that, Linda? We began years of planning and accomplishment that will have a lasting effect on emergency preparedness, professional recruitment and consensus building. Thank you, Linda, for teaching me so much. And most of all, for being willing to share for an additional four years. You're, you're a brave one. I knew Mike Scott's willingness to volunteer for the tough jobs from when, when we worked together on the Reinhardt Clinic Board along with Hans Tanges. And it, it was really collegial working. And I was therefore pleased when he moved from the Manzanita Planning Commission to the city council and then to mayor. Well, did you know, Mike, about the challenges it brought? Thank you so much for bringing us through those trying times and for sharing with me your thoughtful planning. The city owes you much. You know, it's very, very rewarding when something you started becomes better than you had ever envisioned. And that's what happened to me. When I resigned from the council midterm and Steve Nudle was appointed to fill the vacated council seat. At every meeting since then, watching Steve's thoughtful, measured contributions, I've said, I did the right thing. Thank you, Steve, for making it better. Those of you who are leaving and Linda who is staying, I am grateful to you for sharing your wisdom, your expertise and compassion with me and with the, and with the entire Manzanita community. I look forward to watching the new mayor and the new city council govern our city in the same spirit of kindness, cooperation and collegiality that we all cherish. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you, Lila.
Thank you, Lila, for your kind, kind words.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you as well. Wanted to express my appreciation to, to Lila. I remember the day when we started, right, Lila? And it's been an adventure.
Do you have anyone else who wants to address the council, Nancy?
Yes, we have Ben Rosenberg. All right, Ben, go ahead.
Well, it's Kim Rosenberg again. And I want to say thank you. I want to, I want to thank the council members and our mayor for the work that they've done for free for years. And I'd also like to really thank our city staff and Lila Amon, our city manager. She spent a couple hours this week talking me through parking and our parking ordinances and why the amendment was made in 2011, which I now understand so much better. And I, I I really thank her for that help and for all the work that she does and for all the work that you all do. Lila, I know, had a lot on her plate when she started. And I can't believe how much energy and effort and how many things have started in this last couple of years. I, I'm a newbie, so I don't know all the history. But I've really enjoyed getting to know Linda and Jenna and Jerry. And I, I wish all of you the best in the new year. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have anybody else, Nancy?
No, Mayor, there's no other hands.
Okay, well, let's get started with our agenda here tonight. As I say, it's, it's pretty short, pretty straightforward. The first thing we have, as we have every month is our consent agenda and approval of three different sets of minutes and the approval of bills for payment. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
They moved in second to approve the consent agenda. If you ever say aye? Anyone opposed, say aye. I think it passes unanimously. You're all being a little quiet tonight. The next thing is something we started a few months ago is, is council reports. If anybody has anything they want to say about what they've accomplished or, or done about the city in the last month, that now's the time to, to share with us. I'll go first. I was at the tree lighting ceremony Saturday night that Lila and this, the city employees put together. They did a great job. And there was, gosh, I've guessed several hundred people there and hot chocolate and cookies and Santa Claus came and I think, but I think the big attraction was the big bonfire they built right in the middle of the field and the people were huddled up there six deep. But they decorated one of the big evergreens up there and I did the countdown on the tree lighting and I, I think everybody enjoyed it. Sounds like something that can probably turn into an annual event as Underhill gets developed as city property probably. So anyway, it was a lot of fun. So that's the exciting thing that I did. Does anybody else have anything else they want to share tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to share a couple of things. So I was able to go to the women's club fair this last, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and they just did a beautiful job. There were baked goods and, and just lovely baskets. And it was a fundraiser and the scholarship or the fund, fund school for a scholarship for a woman at graduating from Neokani High School. So it was a good cause and it was really, and you know, I think people finally got the Christmas spirit. It was just really nice. I also had the ability or took the, or took the opportunity to watch the short-term rail committee, the, the standing committee. And I was really impressed with the quality and thoughtful discussion that occurred there. And congratulations to Joe Newhouse, who was selected as chair of that group. So it's going to be really interesting to see what the future is and what comes out of, of their, of their thoughtful analysis. I also had some information from Mark Beach. I don't know if you know Mark. Mark is the, is really our historian in the, the Haylen Bay area. And he is putting on a class, a history class, starting in January. If you've been to his classes, they're wonderful. He, he is a great presenter. And the education that you get out of it is just, is just wonderful. You can, if you're interested, you can email mark@info@nahalenvalleyhistory.org. And I strongly encourage you to look into it. It's, it's really great. It's, it's a number of classes. I think there are five or six classes and it's really terrific. So that's, that's my report for this week.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else want to have anything you want to share this, this month?
Mayor, I would just like to take my time to express my real appreciation to the community for the opportunity to have served on the council for the last five plus years. I'm proud of the work that we all were able to accomplish. I had the occasion to ask Nancy and Nina if they could help me with some agendas from way back in 2017 and, and 18 and 19. Just, I wanted to reflect on some of the accomplishments that this council and past members of the council had been able to achieve. And it's, it was pretty terrific. And I'm hoping to share some of that personally with others in the next weeks or so. I also wanted to express my real deep appreciation to both council president Kozlowski and Mayor Scott, who have been council president and mayor the entire time that I served on the council. And I, I have always known that I could turn to them with questions or thoughts or concerns, and they were always there for me. And I just appreciate that very, very much. And best wishes to you, Linda, moving forward. I'm, I am very impressed with moving forward for another four years and all the accomplishments that you have achieved here in our community. You, your legacy will long live, you all tell you. It's pretty, pretty amazing. And then the final thing that I just wanted to suggest, it, it would be my holiday wish, I guess, or holiday wish list. Of the one thing that I'm hoping that is taken forward by both the members of the community and the new incoming council members, that they really work to support the staff. I think that Lila has developed a great staff, whether it be public works or development services or the police department or the admin, or I'm probably leaving somebody out. I don't remember who, but every time that I've asked for help or needed assistance or had questions, they were always there. And I know that they're dedicated to their trade and their craft. And we're very, very, very fortunate to, to have them. So I just urge that as we reflect on their work going forward, that we're all there to support them to make our community a better place. So thank you to the community for the opportunity to have participated in. I look forward from the bleachers to see all that's going to happen going forward. So again, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else tonight on, on the council reports? Okay, if, if not, let's, let's, we got four little pieces of new business here tonight. Let's, let's jump right into it. Let's start with the first one, update on the employee policy manual. And Lila, Lila? I gotta have to get that back in my head again. A rundown.
I consider it a compliment you call me Lila. I don't know if she feels the same way, but I'll take that. Thank you very much. So yeah, we do, we have a bit of a short agenda tonight. And I did want to sort of explain, although this falls under new business, much of this is just sort of administrative housekeeping. A lot of the kind of bigger conversations that many of you, all of you were involved in, such as dealing with comprehensive plan and some other bigger items. We'll, we'll be waiting until next year until our new council. But I did want to get through some of, just wrapping up items that are really key items that although they're listed as new business, they're really continuations of, of existing work that's been happening. And it seemed appropriate to get through some of these housekeeping items tonight. So the first one is being the employee manual. I think actually several of you were on the city council when you first adopted the, the 2019 comprehensive employee manual. So I thank you for that. I know that that was, it was a big lift when it was originally drafted.
I just have to say something here. That was
Oh, yeah, go for it.
largely due to Lila Salmon. If Lila hadn't been pushing for that for 10 years, we would not have a personal manual. So she gets great credit for that.
Well, once again, thanks.
I'm gonna add, oh, Lila, I'm sorry, I'm gonna add Jerry Taylor. Because yes, Lila was, was a real advocate for that, but Jerry was the crafter, if you will, of and so he should take a bow as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate both those, those shout outs. And, and that's what made this kind of update pretty easy and I hope non-controversial. Because of the thorough job that those folks did. I've been working with legal counsel. It's taken me a little longer than I wanted just because it kept falling by the wayside as other priorities stepped in. But the primary things that were addressed in this update are the employment equal opportunity policies. And so those change pretty frequently with federal and state legislation. And in fact, the first draft I had of this six months ago also had to be updated for this final draft. So I wanted to just highlight that, that that's where the real substantive changes were made. And those were all made by the city attorney's office. We had an employment attorney do, do all of those, those changes. And so that's really important because in fact, the era money that we received from the federal government requires us to have some of those policies in place in order to spend that money. So, so that's a big, big step. The other changes that I, that I've made or am proposing tonight are changes to the compensatory time off and the vacation policy. And I just really briefly want to touch on those. When I started here, the policy of the city was to allow exempt employees to accrue comp time. And just for, for those out in the community that may not understand or know the, the terminology here, exempt employees are exempt from overtime laws. And non-exempt employees are not. And so our police department and our public work staff, not our director, are non-exempt employees. And so that's important because those folks get called out in the middle of the night, have to deal with emergencies, often have to work overtime to deal with kind of issue, mission critical issues. The rest of the staff are, are considered exempt. And the reason why I made that change is when I did start, there was a pretty hefty usage of that. And the law requires that we pay that out after 40 hours. And that presents some challenges to us in terms of budgeting. We budget for overtime for our exempt staff. We do not budget for overtime for exempt employees. And I've had a number of conversations. So I, I do want to mention that I talked to all the department heads and I've talked to each of the staff members individually who will be impacted by this. But it is actually in the best interest of the city and our attorney advised me as well that we treat exempt employees as exempt employees. And so I've, I've, I've put forward a policy that I believe is decreases the city's financial liability in, in allowing that. What we are replacing that with, however, is a flexible time off policy. And so that will be applicable to our exempt employees. And one thing, and I think it's related to the vacation time policy, so I'll jump into that really quickly. And I'm happy to take any questions too. When I came here, I was here, you know, I started in the midst of COVID. We had a number of staff who were really being pushed to the limit. And the depth and breadth of their loyalty was evident. And it was also evident in their vacation banks, which almost doubled what, what was previously allowed. So we had a carryover maximum. So we were telling folks that you can only carry over 100 hours to the next year. And there was a temporary policy that this council approved that allowed that to be 150 hours. When I came in, I'd say more than half the staff had more than 200 hours of vacation time. And I felt put into a position where I would be penalizing folks for really being so dedicated during this time of, of need. And so one of the things that I've really tried to both model and encourage of my staff is the value of time off. Since I've been here, those vacation banks have dwindled. So we don't have that kind of number of hours in the bank, so to speak. And I really have tried to encourage staff to use that time and promote a, a culture of work-life balance. I find that when folks' time off is valued and encouraged, they actually use it. They come back refreshed and able to do their jobs even better. And I don't want to speak for the staff, but I, I think folks would agree. I have folks that are smiling and often, you know, not in a fear of taking time off. And so what I worked with the city attorney to do is to draft a policy that doesn't limit the amount of carryover, which from an administrative efficiency standpoint is a lot easier for us. Because one of the reasons why we were in the situation we were in is that that vacation bank was not being managed. And so those hours built up. But we would limit the payout. So while we would let folks accrue vacation, if for any reason, whether they're terminated, resigned, retire, the maximum payout for that vacation time would be limited and capped to 120 hours. What that does is it allows some of our longtime employees who maybe if they're able to, my philosophy with vacation time is that you need to make sure your work's covered. And as a team, we help cover each other. So we're a small group. And so for folks to take time off, somebody else has got to pick up that slack. But we wanted people to have the ability, if they wanted to take, you know, a trip back to their heritage home for a couple of weeks, that they had the ability to do that. So, so that's one of the key policy changes that I, I am proposing. And the final one, which is, which, well, there's two more, which is an ask. One of the kind of quirky things about the holiday time off is that we allowed staff to take a floating holiday and they could take either Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. And so last year I was left in a bit of a quandary because people used either their personal holiday to take one or the other of those off. And then they used their option to take one or the other of those off. And I was left without staff. And so what I'm proposing is that we just close the city on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and we close the city on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So that would add one additional holiday. And then we would give the police department, who doesn't ascribe to our holiday schedule, an additional floating holiday. The final two changes that I made are mostly administrative. So we used to get monthly paper paychecks when I started. We now get bi, bi-weekly. So every two weeks, staff are now getting paid through direct deposit, which is great. It's actually created a lot of efficiency internally for us. And I established a remote work policy just to acknowledge the fact that most of our staff work in the office, but sometimes we do have at least one person that does work from home sometimes in the afternoon. And so this sets up a formal policy for that, for folks that may be wanting to utilize that to work with their supervisor. And that just allows us to establish some expectations and clarity around responsibilities. So those are the key changes. And I, I wrote a staff report about it so that there, the details are in there. I'm sure all of you had a chance to read it. And I appreciate those of you that reached out and asked for some clarifying questions. And hopefully I was able to answer those. But my recommendation would be for the city council to adopt the resolution making this our new employee manual. Be happy to take any questions if you have any. And I think, I guess, one final note, I want to say that even though this is an administrative handbook, the council does play a really important role in this because the handbook does identify certain policies that actually do and could have a long-term implication for the city's budget. And so things like how much vacation we offer this additional holiday, I'm asking, I think is a, it's a no cost to the city, but it is a policy decision to say, should we close one extra day? The majority of it are administrative policies, but that's really an important role that the council does make is whether or not, because these, you know, commit the city to certain things. And so just want to clarify that, that that's, that is an important thing. It's why we're bringing an administrative handbook to you is because it does have implications long-term. But again, I don't think any of the changes that are proposed here are super substantive. Just really getting us up to, up to speed and reflects more of the kind of cultural leadership that I, I bring to this organization.
Well, I'm glad this is a living, breathing document. And after Jerry put it together, it didn't just end up on a shelf somewhere because Because in twenty nineteen, we were flying with nothing.
Yeah, we use it all the time. We use it all the time. And it's super important for staff. So they understand. One of the things I do want to acknowledge that from a policy standpoint that this council, you know, a lot of you are on this council when that decision was made. Is that we're actually not required to, because of our size. To to do the, oh gosh, you can't, it's like skipping my brain right now. But the. Have you ever had those moments where you're just like, what am I? It's a federal policy for leave, a family medical leave act. Thank you. Um, we're not actually required to do that, but the council that adopted this handbook. Made a statement by by having that be our policy. And I just want to say thank you. I support that just from a. A quality of life standpoint. And then I think that sends an important message to our staff. Things happen. And so I thank you for supporting staff and voluntarily offering that. That support through offering our staff the family medical leave.
Does anybody got any questions for Layla on this?
Rock, paper, scissors. I don't know. I had I had a couple of. I have one comment, I guess, and maybe some back and forth with Layla regarding. The vacation time, as I've reflected on this over the past couple of days. One, I think, but the adoption, and I could be wrong, but I think the adoption of the FMLA. Restricts our ability to do a lot with the comp time. So I know we're in adherence with the FMLA standards for comp time. But that does provide some oversight to what we can and cannot do relative to compensation time. The the bigger issue for me, after looking at all and having some discussions with Layla, which was very helpful. As I sit here and think about it, I wonder about. What I would consider to be a liability by allowing unlimited vacation time accrual. And yes, you can try to restrict it by telling people, you know, please take some time off. You can encourage that, but somehow, at least in my experience, it always seems to just continue to build and build and build. And the more senior employees in particular who get more vacation time. It's easier for them to build that up than obviously someone who's only been here a short time. So maybe we can talk a little bit about the liability that the city is incurring. If there is one by allowing unlimited vacation time. And then I want to talk a little bit about the. Amount of time that we're designating for cash out at time of severance. And I wonder about the hundred and twenty hours, which is essentially three weeks. Which I actually would like to propose that you move that to four weeks. Which to me is more logical because it represents one month of work, essentially. And three weeks just seems awkward to me, especially for someone who's a tenured twenty five or thirty year employee. Who may have accumulated huge numbers of vacation time through their own generosity for serving the city. And then we cash it out at three weeks of vacation time. So, you know, we can't. We're in a difficult situation here based upon where we live. And recruitment of people to come and work at the city. We're competing against much bigger jurisdictions who pay a lot more money. And may or may not have a lot more fringe benefits. So I think it's so important that we maintain a high level, high standard. For our employees so we can have employee retention. So with that, I'm just going to ask you maybe to comment a little bit about the liability. Have you done any work on what that liability might look like going forward with unlimited accrual? And then what your thoughts are about bumping that up to a hundred and sixty hours rather than a hundred and twenty hours for cash out.
Thanks. Yeah, I did. I spent quite a bit of time working with the city attorney in particular about that that liability factor. And I think from a financial liability standpoint or a litigation standpoint. I feel confident in the way that we've written the policy that we are limited to the cap of the accrual time. That we include here. So I feel really confident in that. The other liability I do worry about is staff saving up their vacation and then not using it. So that's actually a bigger concern of mine. And like I said, I think we've seen a transformation in terms of just the culture here. And folks are taking vacation. I have one staff person who hadn't taken a vacation in a long time, beating right now because they're going to Mexico next week. I'm a little jealous. But so I think that's in terms of like, you know, social liability. That's the one thing I I do worry about. So I've been working with my management team to make sure that they're encouraging and supporting their staff to take time off. I originally proposed.
So we can segment segment this a little bit. My my concern when I asked the question was where we have. Departments with minimum staffing needs. And I'm speaking in this case specifically about the police department. So if we allow unlimited accrual of vacation time and we have a police officer, for example, especially as a near retirement. That wants to take a whole ton of time off, which they've been awarded because we haven't. We haven't restricted their amount that they can accumulate. There is a liability there because we have to hire somebody back at overtime. In order to fill their position. And so that's that's my concern is what liability monetarily. I'm I'm with you on the getting them out the door and making them take their time, right? But I don't know that that's I don't know that that's a function of unlimited vacation. And I think that's a matter of just managing the people to get them to go out the door. My bigger concern is what's the liability we're assuming on us, particularly on a minimum staffing department. Where we have to cover the person that's on vacation, especially if we had a long term or they got sick. You know, that's another issue with all that. It really wouldn't matter. We'd have to cover them anyway. But. That was really where I was aiming this in.
No, I appreciate that clarification. And that's actually a very good distinction. The way that I would answer that is that both the public works director and the police chief are responsible for managing their budgets. And that means managing their overtime estimates. And so that would be, I really defer to my department heads on how they engage with their staff members. And I also have to look at this neutrally, right? Like I have a team now where I could say to you. I think we would all agree like, oh, that won't happen. These guys won't do that. Like, they really look out for each other. One guy's not going to bust off for a month. And make a bunch of people work overtime. So I don't want to dismiss that because we do have to write these manuals to assume that someone's going to push the limit. What I would say to that is, is that it ultimately requires that the management manager. Signs off on that time off. And so if it does create a significant liability for overtime. Then that vacation request can be denied. So even though you accrue that vacation, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can take it. I would say our police department, they do have a pretty, I think they all have a fairly decent bank. But they actually work together pretty well to balance that. But I do appreciate that distinction. And I would say that it's really managed by their, we require them to review their budgets every month. And make sure that they're tracking with their line items. And. If I start to see that getting out of whack because they're letting folks take extensive time off and it's costing the city money. You know, I have a conversation with with our department heads. I don't anticipate that being an issue with this current team. But your comment is duly noted. And I think that that's how it's managed.
Yeah, I I I'm not going to belabor the point. I would just urge caution and. Us monitoring over time, five years from now, ten years from now. The story can be completely different, right?
Well, we should be monitoring that, like you said, absolutely. And if we do start to see that like that's not working. Then we have the opportunity to come back and address that. One thing I did know is that I'm going to make a practice of having this updated every year. So that we're just staying compliant with EEOO policies. And that is certainly something I'll keep my eye on. So thank you as always for.
I will tell you, and I checked with some folks, of course, they're all fire people, right? But I did check with some folks around both the state and the state of Washington. And there isn't any that I was able to discover that will allow unlimited vacation accrual. That's it's relatively unusual. But I'm, you know, I'm probably operating in a different place, right? I just urge caution because I've been down that road. I've seen, I've seen what can happen to the to the exposure to the jurisdiction. So then the other issue is. The other issue is is whether or not just bump that up to a month. It just seems to make sense. If you're going to allow unlimited accrual. Then to me, an extra forty hours for a long term employees accrued that is more appropriate than three weeks. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
I would a hundred percent support that if this council would agree to an amendment to that. I'll say that my initial drafts of this included a hundred and sixty hours. And I just as being conservative. I tend to err on the side of. Of, like you said, you know, we have competitive neighbors. And this is just an additional benefit that that we could offer. So I would support that fully.
Jerry, you wanted to ask something, did you?
I did, except Layla has sort of addressed it. First of all, I just wanted to thank Layla for. Answering some of my questions on this matter today. I was going to ask about what would be an appropriate interval for reviewing the plan going forward so that. Like you mentioned. We didn't just let the plan sit on a shelf, but it's, you know, it was a few years on the shelf and that's okay. This update was prompted in large part by some federal and state laws that we needed to get in sync with. But obviously, there were a few changes made. And I'm just wondering, I was wondering how often a review might be in order. And you're saying annually. So that's. That's that's probably more aggressive than I would have thought. But if that's if that's what it takes, I think that's a good idea. And it would certainly allow you. To give some thought to some of the things Steve suggested in a relatively short period of time. I I I will say, I don't, we, not that there's a motion on the table, but I I'd be a little uncomfortable. Making a change on the fly here tonight with what you had proposed that we all had written notice of and had a chance to look at. If if that particular change is one that you want to entertain, I think that should probably be deferred to. A future meeting and maybe have an opportunity for council to have a work session on that fairly limited issue. But overall, I think the proposed changes you're suggesting certainly make sense and are largely housekeeping measures.
I just want to take a moment to thank Layla too. She sat down and answered a number of questions that I had, particularly around. Some issues that dealt with staff. I agree with Jerry. I think that, though I think it's a good idea, I think it needs to a little more study and better understanding. Of what the impact would be of taking it to four weeks. And I and I have to say, having been part of the original policy manual and comparing it to this policy manual. It is light years ahead of what we've done in the past. And I think is is pretty well balanced. So that it takes care of the employees, but it also is cautious about about the city as well. So I thought it was a really good balance.
Well, sounds like we got a kind of got consensus to approve this. Your suggestions, Steve. Sounds like they review this in a year. Maybe they can have an opportunity to look at it again and change it at that time. I kind of get the feeling that's the way people are feeling. We ought to. Go with it as presented. Are you okay with that or?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, these changes and modifications, they start somewhere. And maybe that was a start of at least a consideration for that. It just seemed, when I looked at it, it just seemed awkward at three weeks. Compared to what most employers would be offering in the municipal setting. So. Yeah, I'm fine. It's up to future councils to deal with it.
I need someone to make a resolution then to pass resolution twenty two dash sixteen, updated employee policy manual.
I suggest a resolution of the city council of the city of Manzanita, Oregon, adopting an employee handbook. Of personnel policies.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yes, we moved a second at all in favor of passing resolution twenty two sixteen to update the employee manual. Say aye. Anyone oppose, say nay. Yeah, thank you, everybody. Let's move to the next item, which is a renewal of the public works, the equipment fund. And Layla, why don't you give us a rundown on that one?
Sure. I I hope this one's pretty straightforward. I didn't actually draft a staff report for it because it felt pretty straightforward. But this actually probably should have been done in June. But we are required under ORS two ninety four, three forty six, two. To review every our reserve funds every ten years to determine whether or not. We need to continue them or abolish them. When the budget was passed in June. The budget committee and the city council approved a budget that included that public works reserve. So this is just again, an administrative step to renew that for another ten years. And it would expire in twenty thirty two.
Any questions on that one?
One quick question. So Layla, I'm assuming that authorizing the existence of a fund doesn't commit us to budgeting any particular amount of money. In any given cycle.
Does not. It just indicates that we need the fund. And so this fund, just to clarify for folks watching, this is the fund that public works use to buy equipment. For the water and other public works aspects. But yeah, it doesn't commit us to any dollar amounts.
This one's pretty straightforward. I need a resolution to pass resolution twenty two seventeen to renew the public works equipment fund.
I would move to, sure, I'm unmuted here. I would move to approve a renewal of the equipment. Public Works Equipment Fund, I'm sorry.
I think I second that.
Approve resolution twenty two seventeen, renewal of the public works equipment fund. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose, say nay. It's unanimous. Thank you. Move down to item C, amended to the clash contract. Layla, why don't you give us rundown on that one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So if you'll recall, we approved a contract with Clash. Clash was our owner's representative for the City Hall project. And have been an invaluable member of our team as we've moved forward at advancing the project. And we we have, just to remind folks, have split this project into two phases. So phase one, which gets us through thirty percent schematic design. The next city council will be making the decision as to whether we proceed. One of this change order request is to basically cover services that have actually already been rendered. But have eaten into our budget, which are additional things that the city has both required and some unanticipated costs. With respect to, you know, having to negotiate and work with the Department of Environmental Quality. We had additional community meetings that were not originally scoped as part of phase one. But were necessary for us and to move the project forward in a fully transparent way with the community. Responding to a fairly significant public records request, which I do want to note, we did, we were able to charge for. A significant portion of that, but we didn't, we didn't get all of it back. And some additional requests of specific community members who actually have been reaching out directly to. Our architect and others. And so managing responses to that. So what this does is this carries us through the end of phase one. So it's really a continuation of work that this council has been deeply involved in. And will allow us to get to the end of phase one. And I would say it's probably. I would say that it's a good value for what we still have left to do. But they have assured me that we will be able to get to the end of phase one with this. And I think the primary. Cost that this is covering is the additional community meetings as well as. I've requested them to attend a number of city council meetings that were not also originally scoped because I felt that that was. Because I felt that that was in the best interest of the project.
Any questions on this?
Uh, Leila, in your uh city manager's report tonight, are you going to just sort of update us where we're at in the project and sort of? I think what a lot of people would want to know is have a, have that line drawn where we anticipate phase one concluding and where phase two will be teed up.
Yeah, I can do that later or, or now if that works.
No, later's good. I just want to make sure that we have that basic understanding of how it's uh bifurcated.
I'm gonna write it down, so I don't forget.
I think it would be helpful as well. Um, to me, this is a um change order in a sense.
Yeah.
Um, and, and how do we, one of the worries of a project like this or a um. Mechanism that we're using to get there is change orders. And so it may be helpful if you were to discuss briefly it today or sometime in the future. What we have in place to prevent that becoming a real liability to the, to the city. Um, because that can come back and hurt you.
Yeah, it can. Again, um, this, this part of the project we knew would be probably the most um. Uh, difficult to predict, um, because we do have a lot of outreach. Um, there is just a lot more work than we anticipated with respect to that. So. Um, we do have a contract limit, so this is increasing that. Um, so any future changes would need to be justified and I would say that um, there was a number of discussions around those to negotiate uh this, this fee. Um, and I think that the contractors is pretty clear in knowing that um, the, the project needs to be completed within um, the contract amount.
Yeah, if there's no further questions, uh, someone want to give me a motion to authorize the change order to the clash contact?
I move that we authorize the change uh to the clash contract. To what it is forty-five, four forty-seven.
I have a second, please?
I'll second.
The moved and seconded to authorize a change order. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. Okay. Um, I've got one more item to talk about the budget committee, selection committee and. Leila, that falls back on you again.
This is May all night. Um, great. Well, at our last budget committee meeting, um, we discussed the uh cities. You know, process for selecting new members of any of our standing committees. Uh, as Mayor Scott mentioned, um, we have one person for sure who will be leaving the budget committee. So we'll have one opening for, well, we have three members of the budget committee whose terms are up in March. So we will be going through the comprehensive process to appoint members uh to the budget committee. Um, way at the last meeting selected uh the budget committee appointed Jim Dot to serve as the committee member on that committee. So tonight, what I'm asking council to do is to appoint a member of council. Who will be here uh next year uh to serve on that committee. Um, my recommendation um would be, and you can discuss this among yourselves, but. Is that someone who has some budget committee experience? So who's gone through the budget process um at least once? Uh, because I think that's a really important experience in order to evaluate uh future candidates. So. So I think that leaves us with two, two folks, but with that, I'm just, I'm going to stand back.
Uh, I, I would, I'd like to nominate Jerry Spigman, and I think Jerry's the right person to do that because he's on the. Financial diversification committee and there's going to be a lot of overlap and discussion. And besides that, I think you do a great job.
Are you willing to serve, Jerry? She, she jumped in.
I put you on the spot.
I am willing to serve, yes. Although I do have a question, I have a question, uh, not directly related to this role, but as long as we're chatting. So you say the, the terms uh are up in March and, and that. It seems like it's right smack in the middle of at least the beginning of budget season. So how does that, how are we going to work that exactly? When?
Um, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, so yeah, the um, we actually have quarterly budget meetings now, which we didn't have before, but the budget committee usually didn't meet until May. Um, so the first pre-budget meeting will happen in March and it will be scheduled. After the city council meeting when um, but I anticipate. And the reason why we're talking about it now is we talked about at the budget committee that because of the process we've established. Uh, we have to work at pretty breakneck speed in order to make that deadline. So I'm hoping we can appoint in February, but if we can't. The good thing about our budget, um, uh, our city council meetings is they happen early in the month and I'm sorry, I don't have the budget committee. Uh, the budget, we have a draft budget calendar and that occurs after the city council meeting. So. Those folks will be able to attend to that first meeting and that is a pre-budget meeting, which is uh something I instituted last year. We do two pre-budget meetings and then we do our first budget hearings don't occur until May.
Got you. All right.
So it's, it's Jerry, you, Leila and Jim Dopp. Is that the three of you? Is that how it works?
Correct. Yeah. So like with the planning commission, we'll, we'll meet, we'll establish criteria, that criteria will be approved or brought to. The next city council for approval and then we will move forward with the application process.
Okay, well, sounds like you're all set then. We got it, right?
Done and done.
Okay, well, uh, let's move on to your city manager's report. What do you want to tell us here at the end of the year?
Um, gosh, so much. Well, I do, let's um, I'll start with just the update on the city hall project since that's fresh in my mind. Um, but we are in kind of uh. We're edging towards uh a point where we will start moving towards thirty percent design. So we've been doing really a lot of the community outreach, getting a lot of feedback. We held a town hall uh last month uh to go through some of the findings that we've done with additional due diligence. Because we're bringing on a new city council, um, we have at least a couple of new members. Um, I'm having the team uh come in mart in January, I'm sorry, and do a special meeting with council. To go through um what that presentation that was given to the public. Uh, we have a survey that's still live, so if you haven't submitted your comments, we would encourage and welcome you to do so. Um, to provide feedback. So I'll be providing a summary of that feedback to the city council. And we will be asking for direction from that new city council on how to advance towards thirty percent schematic design. Um, once we have that direction, we can start to, our architect will start to develop schemes that will then be priced. By our um contractor and we'll get it to us, the point of design where there's enough information for the contractor to make an informed uh cost estimate. Um, and then at that point in time is when uh the city council will be uh. Asked to make a decision as to whether or not to proceed with uh phase two, which moves the project through. Final schematic design, design development. So that takes the kind of bigger picture stuff and starts drilling down into a lot of the details. And then we get into the construction documentation. Um, and then we move towards a guaranteed maximum price and construction. So. So thirty percent schematic design is really that first uh. Deep cost estimate that we'll have, that will help us then determine um. How much we anticipate the project to be and then how we expect to finance that. And so all those decisions and discussions will be held with the next city council. So, there's that. Okay, um, let's see. So there uh, there's no planning commission this month. Um, court will be held on the sixteenth. Uh, I did want to just give a big shout out to um particularly my public works team who really. Um, Dan White soul, like if you ever need to plan a party, call that dude. Like he. I just sort of was like, hey, you know, we should do a tree lighting and then here's what I would want, you know, and this, and then he just like made it come true. So. Um, I showed up to help set up lights, but um I take absolutely no credit for um the magic that occurred that night. Um, Dave Dillon was our Santa and he just did a brilliant job. Um, I think one of the things that. Pleased me the most was just seeing how many kids were there. There were so many kids that showed up and um saw Santa. Uh. But um, I just, it was just a really fun event and we had a lot of people there. I always hate throwing parties and I feel like no one's going to show up and. Um, we had a lot of people there. So I was just one of those days that you um. Look at yourself and say, this is why I'm here. Um, so it was just a, was a wonderful moment. Um, and just really grateful for, for the community that came out. I even have a picture of Jerry with Santa that I'm going to hold just in case I need something. Um, it's a great, it's a good sport. So thanks for that. Um. I did also want to highlight there'll be no work session in January because the uh charter has us wearing in new members of council at the first regular meeting. So that will occur at six o'clock uh on January fourth. Um, we are still accepting planning commission applications until Friday. We have seven. That's awesome. Uh, and I've looked through some of them. Um, so there's a really good group of folks that are coming forward. So. Um, we're definitely not want for applicants, but would certainly welcome folks um if they're interested for more. Um, one last thing I did want to touch on uh is um something counselor, because Loski asked me to. To just mention very quickly and I want to thank Kim Rosenberg as well for her interest and she mentioned this earlier too, but we, we had a good conversation about parking. I bet you didn't know that I love parking and I've worked on no less than five parking management strategies. And um, it's something that's actually really close to my heart because. Uh, parking management is actually the key to the magic of a vibrant and livable um main street or downtown. So I know there's been a lot of feelings out there about um the application at two twenty Lanina that was approved back in September. Um, which is going to be home to the future steeplejack. And I just wanted to uh share with folks um, just some things that. Uh, you know, I, I, I appreciate um the strong feelings around this. You know, a lot of hard words thrown our way. Um, we're, you know, we're not bulletproof. We do have feelings, but uh, there are some facts here I didn't want to share really quickly, which is um. The city doesn't actually get to determine what businesses come into this community, but we do determine. Um, based on land use and the types of businesses that are permitted. And so. Uh, this application went through the appropriate permitting process. Um, we permitted a restaurant in a commercial zone. Um, that's allowed by, by right. And when I say we, um, staff made a recommendation and findings that were presented to the planning commission and the planning commission approved that application. Um, one of the things that's brought up in that letter that's um, and there's been a couple uh that is um. The most uh, I think concerning to folks is parking. So our, our city council, our planning commission revised our parking standards back in twenty eleven. Um, to account for the fact that no development was really happening on lots of five thousand square feet or less. And so they eliminated the parking uh requirement for that. So if you develop on a lot that's five thousand square feet or less. You are not required to build onsite parking. Um, the reason for that is, is because it's simply math. Um, when, you know, an average parking space is three hundred and twenty square feet. If you're requiring, um, you know, you just do the math, it starts to really make that site undevelopable. And that is a common thing that you see in pretty much every main street that was developed. Um, in the early part of the twentieth century, um, when they were built around uh more of a pedestrian um scaled environment. So the, the planning commission went through that process. Um, they went through a public hearing process. I think they had multiple meetings about this. But they did do in that process is they did um through the records, uh, you know, we've learned from that. Um. They did try to retain the bulk and massing that's consistent with what's on Lanina. So by removing the parking element, we. They didn't allow for the lot to just get fully built out. Um, so there was a lot of thought put into that. But the point being is, is that this was permitted outright to not have parking and it isn't to say that. Um, parking isn't um something that we don't think about. Um, but it is something that can be managed and addressed. And as I pointed out, like I'm passionate about parking because parking is. It's a service, it's a use. Um, and the city has a number of parking spaces, both on street and off street. And um, if the, we find that there is an issue, there are solutions to addressing that, that um. Can be done thoughtfully and um can help to contribute to a vibrant and livable uh downtown. So I just wanted to um offer that glimmer of hope that um it is something that can be addressed. Um, and if that ends up being a priority of the next council, that's something that we can certainly um look into. Um, and in my experience doing parking management plans, you start with an inventory. And then you start with a pretty comprehensive utilization study so that you're working with data and facts in order to make. Informed decisions about how you actually manage um, manage that system because it is a system and we need to figure out how to make it work in harmony. So. Um, I just wanted to offer that up and uh with that.
Well, I have a just a question, a couple of questions on that, Leila. Um. We talked a little bit about uh the comprehensive plan and we're moving into the comprehensive plan. Is there any way that will affect? Either the kinds of buildings that we have downtown or are parking at all, or is that, will that not be part of that process?
It depends. I mean, I feel like the policies in the comp plan that described the land uses, so that's a chapter, I can't remember. Um, so the land use chapter is what describes the, the sort of nature and form of uh the downtown. And um, these parking standards were actually changed in order to help reflect that. So a walkable downtown that. Um, you know, that has commercial development. Um, when you start requiring high levels of parking, you end up with. Um, more opportunities for um curb cuts, which creates conflict between pedestrians and cars. And it impacts the ability for development to occur, particularly on small sites and our downtown is made up of small sites. So um, I mean, the answer is yes, you know, I think when we go through a code update process, that would be the time that we would want to evaluate that. I guess what I would offer is to say that onsite parking is not the end all be all solution. It actually has its own um impacts that. And just my professional opinion is that there are other solutions that can be addressed using both offsite. Uh, parking lots, shared parking arrangements, charging for parking um and managing the on-street system. Right now, we don't manage the on-street system. It's a, it's no, there's no time stays. Um, so there's a kind of a continuum. Of strategies that can be put in place that can make the, the system that we have already um function better.
So would a, a study be a first step as we prepare to look at that in the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
But for me, I think that's going to be a, it would be a priority of mine as we move into this next year. Uh, because it's, it, it is a problem downtown and there is a solution. And if we can get to it, I think it would be really helpful.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation is that we really take a hard look at it and we um, in my experience, what, what. There are a couple of firms and, and that do this work where they evaluate sort of a specific area. They look at both the off-street um lots, so those are private and public. And then the ons, what I refer to the on-street system, I'm talking about the, the system that's in the city's right of way. And they measure that and look at how many spots do we have? And then they actually come out and do inventories during um, for us, it would probably be during a peak season time. Um, to determine where we're starting to see things get kind of messed up and where things utilized and where are things underutilized and. Um, that gives us a really solid foundation to understand the strategies that we can put in place to help mitigate. Um, those differences. Um, an example is in the community I worked in, um, there was a lot of. A lot of voices around there being a massive parking problem. We did this analysis and we found, sure enough. On about four block faces, there was a huge problem, but there was underutilized parking within six blocks everywhere else. And so we were able to develop strategies to help create higher turnover in those areas where it was red. And then in the areas that had capacity, um, strategies to help move folks into those systems. Um, I do want to say, one of the first things people go to is build a parking garage, you know, that'll solve the problem. Parking garages tend to run and these are old numbers. These are pre-COVID numbers, thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand a space. Um, so. That is kind of an, it's not really a solution.
Right. Well, we have parking capability at Fifth Street that isn't well signed. So I think there are lots of things that we do to increase the, the parking. So. Good, I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. I love talking about parking. I love talking about parking.
I'm glad.
Looks like we're ready to adjourn.
Well, I, I'd just like to say one thing before we adjourn. It has been my honor. And privilege to serve with you, Mike, and with you, Steve. Uh, Mike, your leadership through COVID was exceptional. Uh, you've always been a strong leader, but we wouldn't have gotten through that, the way we got through that without your strong leadership. And for that, I think the community and your videos and the communication and all of the things that went into that. Um, it's just, it's a highlight of what you, you didn't, you've done a lot of things. But that is really a highlight of what you've done and I think the community, I know the community really appreciates that and, and as do I. And we're gonna. We are gonna, we are gonna miss you. Um. Steve, um, I just don't know what to say. You have. The experience and knowledge of a seasoned leader. You are able to seek out facts and make them understandable. And help us do better policies. Uh, you've been an extraordinary. Uh, counselor on the city council and I think you've made, you've encouraged. Sometimes too much. You have encouraged us to be a better council. And I think the policies that we've made during your tenure are better because of your input. So thank you. And again, I really appreciate the opportunity and privilege of serving with both of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Well, with that, we're sign off. We'll see you around town. We're adjourned.
Bye.